All right, welcome. To the May twenty fourth. Brier City Council Meeting, we'll go to roll call, Councilmember Nick.
Here.
Customer Marley.
Here.
Customer Crinkie.
Here.
Customer Gallagher.
Here.
Customer Roseman.
Yeah.
Customer Moran.
Present.
And Councilmember Lockhart.
Here.
All right, moving on to public requests and oral communications, this is the portion of the meeting when. You can address the counselor myself, please raise your hand if you'd like to talk to us.
We have three with us in attendance.
Okay.
But nobody's raising their hand.
All right, one more time, this is the public request oral communications portion of the meeting, if you'd like to address the counselor myself. Please raise your hand. All right, I don't, Paula, do you see any?
No.
All right, we're moving on to reports of committees and city officials, so I'll start. First of all, I have some good news with respect to the pedestrian bridge. We're moving forward with the regulatory process and receive the approval to move forward, it's still our goal. Through our engineer pays to get this to bid. Soon and get a contractor on board and then do it within the fish window. Which would occur this. This summer. So that's our goal and we're sticking to it and we're on, we're on schedule to do that.
Yeah, John Corba and I talked this afternoon and we're gonna try to put it out for posting. June first and eighth and then have our bid opening on June sixteenth is our goal.
About permitting.
That's all part of this.
Yeah, that was our HPA got approved yesterday, so.
So yes, we're on, I mean, because there's a very short window, that's why we were pushing this. To get this done, so we're on track, oh, and you know, I mean, I guess the biggest question right now. Is, you know, will we get contractors to respond?
That's the problem.
And so.
For half the time to do it during the fish window.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the challenge at this point. But that's our hope.
Have we?
Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Paula, what was the acronym?
HPA.
HPA?
P.
Oh.
P is in Paula.
Oh. So yeah, John Forbus heading that up and yes, we're hoping that we can get that done. Anything else on that?
Mayor, have, have, have we got a better sense of what the ballpark figure might be for this revised bridge if we go to proposal?
No.
No.
No, once John finishes up the calculations and everything for the stuff that will be going out, he'll be able to give me the engineer's estimate. So I would, I would expect that he'll have that for me either by the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
All right, thank you, moving on. This week on Monday at noon, we had. Maybe our first ever Brier City Employees Appreciation Lunch. And so staff was invited and attended and I got to thank them for their contribution and. I think it was well deserved and something that I've been talking about doing for a while and so we pulled that off this week. Earlier this week, you received an email from Paula with respect to. Tomorrow night in your invite to go to Malik Terrace to talk about Snohomish County's use of the funds. And a chance for you to input, so I guess tomorrow night at six PM. For those of you who are able to attend, that would be great. Later on the meeting Lieutenant Ridda will be joining us. The chief will not be with us, but the lieutenant will be reporting to us tonight. Any other? Comments or questions or reports from committees or city officials?
Did checks for everybody.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, I attended the May eighteenth Planning Commission Meeting.
Yes, and could you just give a brief report on that, it was, we had some training, just your perspective on that.
Yeah, it was, it was really good refresher on what the role of the planning commissioner is and how to make motions, you know, this. Something that I think some of the newer ones may struggle with a little bit and just the, you know, the importance of. Open meetings and. Again. The, the. What, what the responsibilities of the plan commissioner is and the city attorney attended kind of tag teamed the, the training with Paula and of course you added in some comments as well, but. It was unfortunate that some of the planning commissioners were not able to attend the training, they, they missed out, I know that there's some. Potential for a video to be distributed to them, doesn't have the same impact because you're not able to have that interaction, I think is really valuable in that type of training. But hopefully they'll be able to take away some, some good points from what was brought up that evening.
Yeah, and they were, they were sent the reminder today with a video link that they can, those who are not tenants can attend that training, so that was very valuable. Yeah, between myself and the C Attorney and Paula, we got to talk about, you know. Their role as commissioners and the importance of. The things that they're doing, so I think it was very effective. Thank you. Any other reports? All right, moving on to approval of minutes, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Prove the Brier City Council Minister, May ten, moved by Gallagher, seconded by Nick. Any discussion? None, hearing none, all in favor of the motion seen by by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post a nay? All right, and moving on to workshop.
Move to approve the workshop minutes from May seventeenth, twenty twenty two.
Second. We have a motion by Marley, a second by Lockhart, I believe.
Yes.
In discussion to the motion for the workshop made seventeen.
Could, could I ask a question about the, the South County Fire Regional, the Regional Fire Authority discussion? Yeah, that continues to fascinate me with each presentation, I, I learn a little more and. Go back and I, and I look at the data from the Snohomish County Assessors Office as well as from the, the RFA. Will, will we have an opportunity as a group to maybe? Talk more about some of the numbers, the accounting, the figures that were presented in the data as part of a strategy to, to maybe. Truly identify the whether we have parity being offered in terms of this, this proposal that the RFA has been laying out to us?
Yes, so you know, this is going to be, obviously we've talked about it a couple of times, we're going to talk about it again at our first. June workshop, which is June sixth, so yes. You will be able to have those that, those questions, we're gonna, we're gonna answer all your questions, we understand it's a complicated issue. And so yes, we will be talking about it again, first workshop meeting of, of June. What I would recommend, if you have specific questions, let me know so that I can try to get them answered prior to the.
Yeah, yeah. I will do that.
Thank you.
You, you've seen some of my spreadsheets the past, that provides them further and, and true them up with some of the data that the chief presented last week and there's still some, some, some disconnects for me that I'd like to. No. To get some clarity on, so we'll do.
No problem, thank you.
Need to take the vote.
Yeah, the motion is about the minutes.
Of course.
Yeah, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion seen by by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post a nay? And the motion passes, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. I guess I would prefer we do these one at a time. Just, just to keep it clean, so I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I moved to approve the, the right of way use agreement with Steve and Carol Dunaway located at twenty one nine oh eight thirty fourth Avenue West.
Are we have a. Motion by Marley, second by Crinkie, I believe.
Yeah, that was the I heard first too.
Any discussion to the motion again, consent agendas items that we've talked about already in workshop. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion seen by by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post a nay? And the motion passes.
And Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of the right of way abuse agreement with Richard and Eva Sailor located at two one nine. One zero thirty fourth Avenue West.
Second to motion.
Motion, motion by Gallagher, second by Nick, any discussion of the motion to consent agenda item B. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion seen by by saying aye?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the estate of dreams developer extension agreement located at two 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 one five Brier Road.
Okay, just let me, let me finish this. Any opposed to be? Hearing none, the motion passes, Mr. Lockhart.
I will do it again, I move to approve the estate of dreams developer extension agreement located at two 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 one five Brier Road.
Second.
Thank you, motion by Lockhart, second by Crinkie, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion seen by by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post a nay? And motion passes. All right, moving on to miscellaneous business, tonight we have with us Lieutenant Redout, welcome Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Looks like you're somewhere, where are you?
I am in P four currently.
Oh, boy.
So I, this is actually, I, I needed to get internet connection and I was having trouble connecting wirelessly via the laptop I had, so.
All right, is that, is that white smoke out the window or?
No, no, it's just rainwater.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you for having me, I can give an update on where we're at with vehicles. I have a couple other things to update on as well, but we'll start with the vehicles, so P four went to Paulson's. Yesterday, we picked it up today and it had a. Oil separator. Installed in it and essentially catches the oil that was bypassing into the intake and burning and causing problems, so. There was an issue that happened last week during an emergency call and P four was unable to respond and ended up getting, going into limp mode. And so it ended up going to the shop. The shop says that it needs a new engine, but this could be a potential fix for it in the interim. Which is why I'm driving it to kind of make an evaluation before I. Allow it to go back on the street and respond to emergency calls, so that's where we're at with P four.
Just for full disclosure, today Councilmember Nick and Councilmember Gallagher met with myself and the chief to talk about the car. Issue all the, in, in its entirety and specifically. Talk about P four and so I want to thank those two council members. And yes, this is a complicated, difficult issue. So yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks Lieutenant, continue.
Yeah, yeah, so the reality is, I mean, the car is six years old, so, but it has low miles, but, so we're, we're evaluating it and seeing. If it is going to be able to respond in a, in a good way and we're trying to do that as effectively and affordably as we can without having to dump several thousand dollars into an engine. So that's where that's at, we do have the, the rental car from FCI right now and that's actually been in use, I mean, we used it yesterday. Because Monday we had training and we had four people there, including the chief and I. And so in order to have a vehicle to use, that, that actually was in use yesterday because P four was in the shop. And so, so far that's been a good addition for us right now. And we're currently working on getting everything outfitted in that. Just as far as, you know, getting first aid kits and things like that, so that that vehicle is fully responding vehicle for us. And the. There is an option, I, I don't know if it was addressed directly in the work study, but you know, we're actively looking at. All the different options between leasing vehicles, which I know has been presented and there's. The biggest problem is, is getting vehicles because of backlog of vehicles. There are two vehicles, excuse me, available right now through Duane Lane. To twenty twenty two all wheel drive chargers, which would be available for purchase, so. We've been presenting all of these options before the mayor and work study and trying to come up with any alternatives that are available so that we can try and. Get the fleet to a position that it should be at, so that we can have vehicles that respond and it's been fine, I, up until we start hiring people and that kind of leads me into my next. Part here, as far as our update, we have an oral board tomorrow, so it's through civil service. And we have two lateral candidates that are going to be interviewing to fill our final officer position, so. It's really good, we have a great candidate from Bellevue Police Department and a candidate from, that was at Snohomish County Sheriff's Office as well. So that's going to be happening tomorrow and then it'll go through the civil service process, so and then continue and complete the background investigations depending. How the interviews go. And other than that, a couple of events coming up, Coffee with the Cop is June first, you may have seen it posted on our Facebook page. Which we're starting to put out as far as marketing and things like that to the community and get some engagement there, so that's June first from seven AM to ten. AM at Brier Pizza. Will at least have, the chief will be there and Officer Otaki will be there at the least. And of course, welcome the community to come and anybody that's available too, so.
Now, I'll, I'll be there and Paula's gonna give our warning about council members.
Uh, no more than three of you. And while you're there, you need to be careful the topics that you're discussing freely. Because things that are yet to come before you for a vote. You need to not, you know, be muddying the waters. Regarding your decision making, so, and this is an opportunity for. Citizens to talk to our police officers, you know, about, you know, police issues, if they feel like there's burglaries or. You know, if somebody's wanting, interested in a block watch, things like that, you know, talk to them about how excited they are that we're bringing back National Night Out, you know. And, and just for them to get to know some of our officers and our new chief and I'm sure Chad will be attending one of these, so they're gonna get to meet our new lieutenant. And, you know, so we just caution you that if you are in attendance, please be. Wary of the topics you freely discuss if there are, you know, especially if there are more than one of you there. If there's just one, you can't muddy waters, but even if you have three of you there, you can, you can. Back us into a little bit of a corner, even though it's not a quorum, but if a quorum does show up. While you can be there, we would prefer that number four turns around and goes back home. Just so that we are never in that position. So.
You can, you could, you can take shifts, thank you Paula.
Exactly, yeah, take shifts, that would be great.
So.
I will not be there, I'm waiting for cop car karaoke night myself.
Okay, yeah, through the PA, that'll be fun. Yeah, so. Coffee with the cop is a great event, the community seems to be engaged in it once they figure out it's there and it's available. So it's a really nice place, low barrier that people can come and talk to us about issues and we can hear from them because. You know, as you know, and as you've may have heard. You guys, the community are our eyes and ears, you know, we can't be everywhere at once and so we love connecting with the community, community and finding those things out. And on that National Night Out, we're, you know, actively planning it, securing vendors. And it's, it's going well, Parks Board, I was on that committee meeting and they're excited to be part of it, help out as usual. I think we're gonna bring back the barbecues and, and cook up dogs and, and the whole, the whole thing, we have a band lined up already. It'll be family friendly and bouncy house and we're getting engagement from South County Fire, they're gonna be there. Fish and Wildlife, several other vendors that are emergency related, so I would love. Any connections and input that you guys have right now in the community, especially related to emergency services or community related, anything kind of. Building upon community that helps with what we do as well, I mean, we're, we're actually having a dog. Trainer come and kind of set up a booth and it's gonna flow really well into a program that we're. Going to be starting for specific crime prevention program, it's called Dog Walker Watch and it's a way to engage the community and teach them about. You know, reporting suspicious activity and it's a fun way to involve the community and people that go and walk their dogs and give them a little bit of. You know, they'll be a little bit more invested into what we're trying to do, it's just a, you know, putting. Putting eyes and ears to the, the block watch programs, so we're gonna be doing that. Launching it a couple weeks before National Night Out, so that's kind of where we're at on. The bigger picture on, you know, the events that we're working on, of course, you know, the thing that is on the top of mind right now is the vehicle situation and trying to figure out what the best way to do that is. And of course, the highlight of hiring our final officer hopefully here in the next few weeks.
Go ahead and Safeway for cupcakes, they used to always donate them for National Night Out.
Who, who is that?
Safeway at.
Oh.
Twelfth and forty fourth, go hit them up for cupcakes.
Awesome, yeah, I, I've, I've reached out to them, they've been, they've already committed to being a supporter.
Not, not to set the bar, but you've heard about the Coast Guard helicopter we used to have.
Yes, I have, Councilmember Crinkie, I have, and I am, I'm working, I'm trying, we'll see.
We got a classic picture somewhere around there.
Yeah, I know, that's a pretty high bar, but we're gonna work toward it.
Yeah, that was thanks to Eddie on the force of the time.
That's great.
All right, thank, any, any other questions for Lieutenant?
How about a drone?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, we might get a drone shot so we can get, you know, video of the event, it'll be nice.
Don't fly it into the power lines.
Yeah, right?
All right.
Thank you Lieutenant.
Thank you Lieutenant.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
All right, all right, anything else on miscellaneous business?
Just a quick note along that line after our various discussions. Hopefully. We can zero in on the leasing buying thing, but. Thinking about a lot, leasing looks like a good alternative when we get to that point.
Yeah, certainly. Presents us with opportunities to pass, because. You know, and you guys, I think all know in reality, we're struggling. To fill our Public Works Department with applicants. Continues to be a source of irritation, not only for our city but others and if you know of anybody that would be looking for employment. Whether temporary or more long term, we're certainly looking. Because we're, we're down. And gonna be down another person. And so we are, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a serious issue for us, so. Yes, we're gonna be, it's important to try to fill those spots.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll agree with Mike when we met this morning, I would definitely be leaning towards a lease situation, I would like to try it out. I mean, it's not as for everything, I would really just like to really test the waters in this situation versus buying and driving it to the wheels fall off as we have been.
It's, I'll interject real quick to, based upon the, the schedule, the two vehicles. You, and this probably was presented at some point, but it would be potentially two vehicles to start to replace P four. And P two, which are either miles over a hundred or, you know, beyond five years, so it would be a low commitment as far as not the entire fleet.
Yeah, I think we're the, what just hopefully we'll get the numbers on is, because we're talking about shortening the cycle, because we've been going so long, but it did, that does drive the cost up, so making sure we understand how we're gonna. Fund this long term and make sure everybody understands all the numbers, I think is my only. Clearly, we've been going too long on the cars too, so there's something to adjust.
Yeah, thank you, thanks everybody.
I have a small laundry list.
Go ahead.
I would love to hear an update on the conversion of sewer bills to online payment processing.
Oh, boy.
What do you want to hear about it?
I just wanted to hear how it was going.
Um. So, so. Um, I'm not happy and if I had my way, we wouldn't offer it at all. That's how well it's going.
We've been struggling, struggling with the vendor.
It, the problem is that they send us these daily reports that say, oh, hey, you collected all this money. And that money doesn't all go into the bank at the same time, so it is making reconciliation. A nightmare. And then as you experienced Valerie. There is like one bank out there that works with one of the EFT providers that. Is everybody's payments are getting kicked back to them, they're, they're getting a thing that says your account number's wrong and it's like. No, it's not, it's right and it's just from that one source that they're getting kicked back and so now. The way that it used to work is if you use your online bill payer from your bank, they sent us a hard copy check. For all of those people who are used to that happening, as these get kicked back to them, their only option is to write us a real check and bring it to City Hall. Because at least during this round of payments, their payment is not going to go through. It, it doesn't matter how many times they try, it is going to continue to get rejected. And so that's frustrating. You know, the vendor is supposed to be working on that and reaching out to the clearing houses and getting them to fix that. Lot of, lots of feedback of the negative Nellies, as I like to refer to them. That they, you know, it's like you want, you wanted an option to be able to pay your bill online. The city cannot afford to cover your credit card fees and everything, we would go broke doing that. And so they want to complain that I'll just keep writing my check, I'm not, I'm not going to pay your fees and it's like, that's fine, we're giving you another option. If you're last minute and, you know, you can't get your check in on time, you can go online and you can pay your bill instantly and it'll be on time. So yeah, you know, there are a lot of the things that other little cities. And I, and I called around to get other cities to give me suggestions on the whole reconciliation problem and. I got the same thing that I got from a lot of them when they first signed up for this kind of stuff where they were all like. I recommend you don't ever do it, it sucks. Because none of them has a good trick up their sleeve to help us make that reconciliation happen, it just isn't.
Does it improve over time, does they refer that after they're in, it smooths out?
I would love to say that that was the case, but I cannot because.
So we traded one headache for another.
Yeah, I've, I've got people who have been on it for ten years and they say they still have problems with the reconciliation portion of it, so.
Okay.
It is what it is, you know. It is what it is, you know, we're, we're trying to work through it.
Lucky people.
Yeah.
The lucky people like me. Who, I mean, I honestly, I do my end of the month reconciliations in my account, and so if I hadn't been paying attention to my emails, I might not have picked up that it was bounced. Are we, are we going to be able to do something? Do we know, is it just my bank, or is it?
Um, well, we had narrowed it down, I don't know if you're with the same bank that all these other people. But we had, you know, we had a group of them that they were all from the exact same bank that was getting bounced, and so, um. We're hoping that's the only one that's getting bounced, that's the only one we've been called about so far. And it's a handful of folks that, you know, it's happened to, um. And, you know, if, if people bring us something that shows that they tried to pay it and it was bounced because of this reason. You know, we of course will take care of, um, late fees for them paying the bill, but, um. You know, in, in the meantime, there's just, there's nothing we can do, and. The other thing that happened too is that, um. When it was set up, somebody didn't check the right box, and so for this billing cycle. Anybody who sent their check in, if they go back into the online system now, it will show that their payment hasn't been received. Because any payments that we're putting in by hand at City Hall aren't getting put into the invoice cloud.
Uh, well, my heart goes out to all of you during this, but it sounds like. There's a plan to handle the people who intended to pay, but their failure was not in their hands.
Right.
So that we're not charging late fees for our technical problems.
Right, yeah, yeah, and we'll just cross our fingers that that little box gets checked and that the clearinghouses get their stuff together. As we get ready to send out the next billing the first week of June, and that this next one will be much smoother than the first one.
Well, and that a lot of people signed up for paperless bills, maybe that'll.
I'm, I'm really disappointed in the whole paperless billing thing, um, we're at ten percent.
Ah, all you guys go sign up for your paperless bill, come on.
Yeah, we're at ten percent, and, uh, that is horribly disappointing, but I will say, a lot of people used the system. To pay their bill one way or another, you know, it's only been in the last couple of days that we've had it slow down, where we haven't had a bunch of payments coming in. And that will change in the next few days through Tuesday of next week, because that's when they're. When they have to pay the bill by, or they get the late fee, and we always have a rush right at the end of the month, so.
Yep, okay, well, thank you for that update, I appreciate all your work, and the, uh, bill processors, are they fond of seized chocolates? It sounds like a little bit of, uh. Presuasions in order.
You know, um, uh, we, we don't turn down, uh, sugared goods of any kind at City Hall. Oh, we're, 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 we're open to that kind of thing, everyone was very excited with the black tie loose cake that came from Olive Garden with our lunch yesterday.
Yay, awesome. Very cool, and then, um, I just had two more things. Uh, I should have mentioned that I attended the first half of the, uh, Snohomish County Planning Commission this afternoon as an observer, as an observer. And I should have taken notes, cause I don't remember what my last thing was, so, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know there's been some talk about Breyer's. Building and new construction codes and trees and stuff, and just kind of random one is, I don't know if you know, but it's D R Hart Horton is building over off Atlas. And, um, they call themselves the Breyer Community, their development, at least that's how they advertise it. John, I don't know if that's normal for adjacent communities to advertise their stuff that way, but anyways. Um, the lot size there is three thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. That's three thousand seven hundred and fifty compared to our twelve-five, so that's. And it's quite a little over, uh, three, yeah, times that, and, uh. Also, did anyone notice that, that, and that little lot size, they got a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house? That's selling for one point four, 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 nine, five million dollars. Um, that's, that's five hundred and seventy-two dollars a square foot, and your monthly payment is eight thousand and eighty dollars. But, I mean, didn't those, I mean, I thought Martin, didn't those lot sizes used to be like ninety-six-hundred and then incorporated?
Yeah, there was an eighty-eight-hundred as well for a county.
I can explain.
Yeah, go. Is that lot mitigation or something?
It is, it's because they have an area that they've had to set aside, and so the way their lot sizes are. Figured is they take the entirety of the property and they.
Oh.
They, you know, then, and they say, okay, we could get X number of lots, which in this case, it's like forty-nine. Um, and then from that, they take out, um, like roadways are considered part of their.
Lots?
Lot size, oh, yes, everything to do with that plat is considered part of their lot size, and so. They, you know, cordon off this area that has to be protected or whatever, and then they make their roads and everything, and then they take the rest of it, and they go, okay, well, now we can. You know, put forty-nine houses on, oh, lot sizes that are less than four thousand square feet.
So they're doing like a lot size averaging?
Well, in this case, there's a lot mitigation, but that's a factor, we'll say you could, uh, you know, this brings up a good point, we might want, because. We and Breyer have gone through this in the past, and we actually have some rules around, there's a lot potential and there's a lot mitigation. And we had done some things very specifically around this, this might be, Mr. Mayor, uh, one of those topics that would be good for a workshop. When we're talking about lots, it hasn't come up recently, but you know, we've got an area that might. Uh, some of these areas that we're getting about were a little bit flatter and easier for people to work with, but it might be good, we've got a lot of council members here who have not probably been through that, and it might be good to. Hear about it before we end up in one of those situations again, so people can get exposure to it.
I'm just surprised they can use our name, so, Mr. Lockhart.
That's interesting.
They can use our name because our.
They're not the only ones doing that too.
Now, I've gotta be obviously careful, I don't wanna say anything derogatory about Pacific Ridge, D R, but, um, historically, I've sold a number of their properties, and. One that comes to mind was actually in Monroe, but it was called Snohomish Landing, they annexed after the closing. But it sounds like a play on words that, again, to me, I'm not suggesting anything, but it doesn't sound as ethical as I would like it to.
Yeah.
The horrible part will be all the phone calls that we get after people start to move into those homes, where they're calling us. Thinking that we need to fix whatever their problem is, and we get to tell them, we're sorry, you're not part of Breyer, you're outside of Breyer, and you need to call Snohomish County.
Maybe we should make, ask them, they would be kind enough, uh, to at least put in their sales packets when people are buying a home, and they get all that stuff that you get with new homes. Here's who you contact, and one should be, if you have problems in these areas, contact the county, not the city of Breyer.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
Would it be worth asking council about that?
Can we get some parks mitigation money out of there? Just saying.
Uh, that is something, it is something that we need, that we will need to work on, is that, um. We have to have an L I L A with the county in order to get any mitigation money. And because, you know, because we hit them up for all of that when this development was first coming in, and, uh, basically, they thumbed their nose at us and said, nope. You don't have that, and we're not giving you anything, we're not making the developer do anything for you.
Yeah, well, similar, similar to the development that's right on our property that we asked for all these things and didn't get anything, so.
Charge him a royalty for using the Breyer brand name.
There you go.
Trademark it.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not trademarked, folks, sorry.
Anything else?
Maybe Disney's available now. All right, I just, I have those moments.
Okay, if there's nothing else, uh, Mr. Gallagher.
Actually, I do have one.
Oh, yeah, that's right, thank you.
Well, you, we've already hit some of the other stuff, but, um. In particular, I sent out the email about if any of you want hard copy packets at meetings. Speak now or forever hold your peace, folks, cause if I haven't heard from you, and you show up at a meeting and go, oh, can I have a hard copy packet? The answer is gonna be no, because they are not going to be made for you. So if you want to have that piece of paper in front of you on council night, tell me, so that we can get them made up and have them there ready to hand out to you the night of.
We do have, we do have improved Wi-Fi in the building.
We do.
So if you bring, well, we have to be careful about that too, don't we, Paul?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it, they're actually outside of our network, and we have a network that is specific for council.
Okay.
It's been set up since COVID happened, so you guys haven't gotten to use it.
I know, Mayor, you were talking about this a while ago, and there's been a lot on the table, lots of issues, more important things, police cars, all that good stuff, but one thing is. Should we, if we start going into the building and doing that, and we have computers, like, I'll bring mine with me, but do we need to consider? The supplied by the city concept, are we in a better standing that way versus? Personal, I'm okay with reminding, but I know that there's sometimes it can be a subject to, you know, somebody says, hey, opened records requests, and they get concerned, so.
That's a, that's a good thought.
As long as you guys are staying within your prior account and accessing your documents through your prior account. Then, you know, one of the things that we have for that is if a, if a public records request comes up, then, um. I ask all of you for whatever you were doing during the meeting, you sign a little affidavit that says.
Cool.
No, all the documents were still on the Breyer system, and that's where you were accessing them from, and you weren't, you know, you, you didn't have them saved to your computer.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about maybe getting some kind of an iPad or something.
But if that works, I'm totally good with that, it leaves one less machine for me to have to deal with, and where I got multiple computers have to deal with, so, cool, okay, thank you, Paul.
Anything else?
That was my last question, thanks for answering it, Paula.
Perfect, all right, Mr. Gallagher.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of the May twenty-twenty-two claim check numbers four-three-seven-one-zero. Checks number four-three-seven-one-two through four-three-seven-one-four, checks number four-three-seven-two-zero through number four-three-seven-three-zero. Checks number four-three-seven-three-two-three through number four-three-seven-five-four, and E F T transaction in the amount of. One hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and nine cents. Voided check number four-three-five-four-eight, reason lost in mail, and reissued with check number four-three-seven-one-one. Voided check number four-three-seven-three-one, reason incorrect vendor, and reissued with check number four-three-seven-five-four.
Wow.
That's a mouthful.
I'll second it.
I can get that, can you do that again, Mike?
Yes, please rebate back by the record.
All right, motion by Gallagher, second by Nick, any discussion to the motion?
Hmm, Mike, four-three-seven-four-zero, Pace Engineers, I think this, this links into the comments from the mayor previously about the bridge. There's one, two, three, four, uh, line items there, are they all related to the bridge, or are they separate services provided by Pace Engineers? And we just made one check to them for fifteen thousand.
Checks for all of the services, I think the check for the bridge is about three thousand twenty-nine hundred.
Yeah, so, yeah. Services are independent of the bridge, okay, okay.
Yeah, Pace has been involved in, um, hydrology, the bridge.
Yeah.
Consulting on various projects, uh, yeah, a lot of.
Different invoices come for every separate project, and they're all coded differently.
Okay.
Similarly, we make one, uh, check to say the Visa card or the credit card, but it is broken down into each, uh, subdivision within the city.
Got it.
Any other discussion to the motion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, signal I was saying aye.
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 Any person say nay, thank you, so, next week is the fifth Tuesday, we will not be meeting. Uh, the following Tuesday is a workshop that will be meeting in person in City Hall. So we look forward to that, look forward to seeing all of you.
Might need directions to find it.
Can we take a picture while we're there?
We.
We can take a picture of you guys if you wanna, if you wanna come in, you know, looking presentable. We'll, we'll have to make you all stand close together, so, you know.
And we are, we are working on, uh, you know, updating or getting a new website and some photographs, and all that stuff's in progress, so.
So we're back to the pants issue, huh?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, you, you gotta wear pants on the seventh.
Yes.
And button your shirt up there, Mexico man.
Yes. Somebody might have texted Paul and said, can you text Mike and tell him to button his shirt?
All right, thanks, everyone, uh, hearing nothing else, we are adjourned.
All right, no, thank.